Welcome to the June 14, 2012 meeting of the Olentangie Local School District Board of Education.
Welcome. This is the school board meeting of June 14th and thank you for your attendance. And Beckett, would please call the roll.
Ms. Dunbar?
Here.
Mr. Kane?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Ms. Beazel?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Then would you all please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to get a motion to approve the agenda with one change that I'm suggesting, and that would be to add, after public participation session number two regarding action items, a board discussion regarding turf fields. So with that, we have a motion with that change to approve the agenda.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
And I just want to clarify that that is a discussion for the board members.
Yes, and it's after the public participation. Would you please call the roll?
Ms. Beazel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Kane?
Yes. Public participation number one for general comments. Do we have any comments?
I have none.
Okay, thank you. Our board, board, excuse me, work session, our first item is with Mr. Ash and it's a legislative update.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have to confess, I was prepared for it. We have a total of 50 handouts and I'm afraid that we have more guests than that today, so I went as far as I could. Perhaps the district will be good enough if somebody did not get one and still wants one. And they may not after I say what I'm gonna say.
Do we have it, do we have it here?
Yes, you should have it.
No, but I'm saying, do we have it electronically and we can, and we can share ours with the audience or? I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Okay, sorry.
And just one word of caution as I start, I want you to remember that I am the messenger and I am not the creator. And so what I'm gonna talk about is only one piece of legislation, Senate Bill 316, which passed last night from both the House and the Senate. It's on its way to the governor's desk. I fully anticipate that he's going to sign it because it has what is his premier piece of education legislation to date, and we're gonna start there. The third grade reading guarantee. We have a reading guarantee in the state. The problem is, it's never been adequately enforced. And it's a cliff. All of a sudden, you're going through the first four years of school, you reach a point where you're not really proficient, and right now, what can happen is you can be retained, or the principal and the teacher can decide, okay, we think that probably with some intervention, the kid's gonna be okay, we're gonna promote the kid. The problem is, there's no intervention in kindergarten, first, and second grades. It's not until we get to the fall of third grade that we find out where the kid is because that's the first year of the state assessments in English Language Arts. Alright, so what this does is start that earlier. As you know, in Ohio, we have five different levels of test performance. We have advanced, accelerated, proficient, and then we have basic and limited. Right now, a score in a limited range is what triggers the guarantee. That's where we're gonna start with the new third grade reading guarantee, but instead, we're going to move it gradually. The state board has been authorized to gradually increase then that standard until we get up to the point that every kid below proficient could be retained in the third grade. It's gonna create some interesting facility issues long-term for some districts, hopefully not for this one. So again, the state board can progressively then adjust that standard, and they're supposed to make those recommended changes to the legislature by the end of 2013. There are some exceptions to the retention requirement. For example, those students who have not been in U.S. schools for at least two full years, and they have less than two years in any kind of an English as a second language program. There are students whose IEPs will exempt them from retention. And then we also, if we have kids then who have IEPs, where they have Section 504 plans, if they received intensive remediation for two school years, and who've been previously retained in any of grades kindergarten through second grade, they will, they will not be subject to the retention requirement. One of the things I want to emphasize about this new third grade reading guarantee is there's no educator judgment involved in whether the kid moves on. That's where the teeth are. That's what the governor has proposed. Right now, the professional judgment of the principal and the teacher is sufficient for the child to keep moving along. That's not the case anymore. The one option is to get an alternative kind of a test other than the state achievement test in English Language Arts, an assessment, by the way, that has to be approved by the Ohio Department of Education. That's what ODE is throughout these slides. And if the student has received intensive remediation for two school, full school years, still deficient in reading, but he's been previously retained in any of grades K through three, but you can't promote him unless he's going to receive intensive reading instruction in grade four. We need to think a little bit about what the potential costs are here. And I would submit to you this evening that the intensive intervention may not be the more expensive part of the whole package, and I'll show you what I think may be. The intensive reading instruction, by the way, from the previous slide is defined here as an altered instructional day with specialized diagnostic information and testing that I'm not sure that we have trained teachers to do in all cases, and science, research-based kinds of strategies that are successful in improving reading for all students. And the other thing is that just because a child cannot read doesn't mean a child doesn't have ability. There are, there are students who are dyslexic. We have gifted students who are actually dyslexic, alright? So therefore, the notion is then, just because that is the case, then in whatever specific field they have strengths, that instruction should be commensurate then with that achievement level. Okay. Districts will be required to assess the reading skills of every student in grades K through three by September 30th of each year. That's going to be a challenge in many cases. And so they're going to be, the state has already developed diagnostic assessments in English Language Arts. They are not going to print them for you. They're gonna be loaded on their website, on a secure website. The district will be responsible for providing its own copies to administer the test to students. There will be a parental notice that says that the student is either proficient or deficient in reading. And that's again, a district requirement that you provide that parental notice. It does not specify in the law whether that has to be electronically or by U.S. mail. But here's what goes in the parental notes. What kind of services are you gonna be providing for the student, as well as your proposed supplemental services and supports? But you have to warn the parent right up front, even, these are kids now, remember, these are kindergarten kids in some cases, who have been assessed by September 30th, their first month of school. And we may be telling their parents, it may be necessary to retain your child in third grade if the student fails to achieve the state cut score, wherever that is. And remember, that's not a static number. The State Board of Education is gonna be required to continuously raise the bar for students to cross. What you will be required to do is for every student, every student in every school district in the state of Ohio who is reading below grade level is going to have a reading improvement and monitoring plan. We wouldn't be educators if we didn't create new acronyms. In addition to IEPs, we now have RIMPs, alright? Which is a reading improvement and monitoring plan. Here's what goes in it. You're gonna identify the student's specific reading deficiency. It's not going to just be the student doesn't know phonics. Which phonics does the student not know? It's specific. What kind of additional instructional services and support are you gonna provide them for that student? You have to provide opportunities for the parents to become involved. You have to make sure that you are monitoring the student's actual services and support that the student receives. And you have to state that the student could be retained in third grade for failure to pass the reading assessment. It also provides for reliable assessment and an initial and ongoing analysis of every student's reading progress. Any student who has one of these improvement plans and enters third grade in 2013, 2014, so that's a year from this fall, must be assigned to a teacher who has a passing score on a rigorous test of principles on scientifically-based reading instruction, or who has a reading endorsement on the license. Most of our teachers coming out of teacher preparation programs at this point do not have reading endorsements on their licenses. I would submit to you that this is the other big area of cost. And it's a staff development cost, a training cost. You're going to have teachers who want to have a reading endorsement on their teaching license, who want to prepare to take this rigorous test of principles. And so I submit to you that training costs are going to have to be an issue. And remember, this starts in 2013, 14, which means the training needs to happen next school year in terms of getting this started. For every student who's retained in grade three, alright? The remediation service will start until the student is reading at grade level. And you can see there, one of the requirements is at least 90 minutes every day of reading. And there are strategies, including small groups, smaller student-teacher ratios, which again adds to costs, or an extended school day, school week, school year, again, that adds to cost. And then a high-quality teacher is gonna be determined by the student performance data if it's available. In addition then, you have to offer then to parents the option to obtain their services from another provider other than the school district. You're going to have to adopt a policy that allows for mid-year promotion if the student reaches grade level in reading to move from grade three to grade four if you permit it in your policy. It will be permissible under state law. One of the interesting conversations throughout the whole debate on this legislation had to do with summer services. Are we gonna force the kids to go to summer school? And I think that generally speaking, the notion was, we're not so sure that's gonna be successful in terms of what we want to do. We're talking about very young children. We're talking about transportation issues then, not just instructional issues. And so it will not require summer services. But there is a change in state law. Right now, state law says you can only offer summer school services for elementary students in either schools or community centers. Now it could actually be home-based. It could actually be online learning. The results then, the reporting is gonna include the assess, results of the assessments in reading and in math, even though this is just a reading guarantee, going to ODE. The other thing is, the tests the students will actually take are not gonna be public records. Ohio did that before. They made their achievement tests public records. They were posted on their websites the year after they were administered, or at least half the questions were. That required the state to redevelop at least half the tests every year. And so it became a growing cost to them. The state will also report annually, well, actually, the board will report annually on the implementation of a compliance with the third grade reading guarantee. And then ODE is going to compile all of that information statewide to show the number and the percentage of students in K-4 who are reading below grade level. Now, as far as funding this, there's a grand total of $13 million for the entire state of Ohio. We would estimate in K through three that probably we are talking, potentially, a total population of about 600,000 students, obviously many of whom will not read, will not need any of the services required by the law. But nevertheless, only $13 million. What's interesting is, it's not even coming from the general revenue fund. It is coming from something called the excess profits lottery fund. In the lottery fund, which everybody thought was the solution to all of our funding problems in this state, the notion is, there's a certain amount of money, $700 million, that is set aside out of the lottery profits and placed into the, to the GRF, the general revenue fund, for schools. This is money over and beyond that. This is money that, they got, actually, $46 million more than what was appropriated, and so that's where they're going to get the money, the $13 million. In addition, the state is going to report and identify additional funds that can be used for the program. I think I can pretty much predict where that's gonna come from. There are many districts who receive Title I funding, Olentangie being one of them, but many of those districts have schools that are in trouble. They have been required now for a long time to set aside a certain percentage of their Title I money for something called supplemental educational services. And quite frankly, the quality's been pretty poor. And so therefore, the state then, as part of its waiver, under the No Child Left Behind Act, has asked to pull that money back and then will use it to help fund the third grade guarantee. So there will be another source of funds, but it's not gonna apply to all districts. District school performance rankings, ratings, the district and school report card. A lot of controversy about this. A lot of people were pushing for an A through F designation as opposed to what we do now. Excellent with distinction, excellent, effective, continuous improvement, academic watch, academic emergency. This says, we're gonna keep that for right now. It's gonna change. It probably has to change. Number one, it's not very transparent. And number two, the problem with going to a grading system is how much you count each part impacts the grade. Is it more important to count graduation rate more than it is to count, for example, achievement gaps among various groups? And no matter with whom you speak, everybody has an opinion about that. So they have to resolve all of those issues first. One thing that you will need to do in this district, and in every district in the state of Ohio, when you are admitting a student for the first time to the district, the school will have to provide a copy of its most recent building report card. That applies not only to public school districts, it will also apply to community schools. There's going to be a separate report card develop for our friends at the Delaware Career Tech Center, and it's going to be issued actually for the next school year by the following September. We're actually gonna start out the year measuring career tech centers, but they don't even know what the standards are. And won't know until that report card is designed, but they're gonna be held accountable to it anyway the following fall. There are requirements on reporting standards in terms of school and district expenditures. You know, I'm just, let me depart for just a second and get on soapbox here. I'm a great believer in ratings. You set standards, people know what the standards are, we have to meet them. It's no different than having high expectations for kids. We know that kids perform better when we expect more. Same thing should be true for schools and for school districts. Rankings are a different matter altogether, okay? I can guarantee you tonight that 50% of every practicing brain surgeon in this country was in the bottom half of their residency. That's a ranking, okay? As soon as we say, we're going to rank the lowest 10% of all the schools along some standard, no matter how good they are, 61 school districts fall into that measure. A ranking is different than a rating. We're going to rank districts though, by school and district expenditures by December 31st, 2012. We're going to align them with the U.S. Department of Education expenditure categories. There are nine of those. They only make sense. The state already does that every year. It compiles all of the treasuries numbers from all over the state of Ohio, comes up with one report. Those are gonna come out next July. There is a clarification. Originally, it said we're gonna do, we're gonna rank by instructional expenditures and administrative expenditures. Well, let me ask you a question. If I have a paraprofessional, knowledgeable paraprofessional, let's say, a licensed practical nurse who is with a single child all day because that child has a breathing tube or a feeding tube, and has to be with that child. Now, is that an instructional expenditure or an administrative expenditure? Because without that person there, the child couldn't be in school. So those are some issues through which we have to work at this point. The law is also gonna require that any academic standards, model curriculum in the basic core subjects have to go to the House and Senate Education Committees at least 45 days before they go to the State Board of Education for its adoption. And in addition, we're going to go back to the days when all of our curricula had to embed career connection strategies into our regular courses of study and curriculum. I can remember, for those of us who've been around since the earth started to cool, I was writing curriculum back in the eighties. And we had a law that came out that required that we do precisely that. It was later repealed, and we're back there again. Teacher evaluation. It's gonna specifically exempt substitute teachers. We are not going to count students who have 60 or more unexcused absences for the school year when we calculate student growth. And we are going to add to certain authorized prudential evaluators, and I'll talk about that in a second. That will include perhaps a third-party entity that you might hire to conduct evaluations, but it will also allow, if you want, to have peer evaluation, if it's part of a peer review agreement. There are several districts that are currently doing that. They report some success with that, that approach. The number of evaluations, it's important and for people to understand, a classroom observation is not the same thing as an evaluation. An evaluation is something that's summative, it's at the end. It could be any number of classroom observations, alright? What this is gonna require is one annual evaluation for teachers on a limited or extended limited contract. And if a teacher is rated as accomplished, and the ratings, by the way, for teachers are accomplished, proficient, developing, and ineffective. And if you have a teacher who's accomplished, then one evaluation every two years instead of every year. As for observations, for, in most cases, it's gonna be two for all teachers, but a teacher who's rated as accomplished will only require one observation rather than the two. Again, there's a real concern that we have expressed to legislators about capacity of the system to handle all of this evaluation. In addition, there will be three observations required for any teacher on a limited or extended limited contract that the administration is considering for a non-renewal. The notion behind that is one additional observation to make sure that's what you really want to do. A major change in the deadlines on evaluation that will impact your board agendas, alright? First of all, all teacher evaluations have to be, would have to be completed, will have to be completed by May 1st. Right now, that date is April 1st. We push everything back. The notion is to have an extra month to get the observations and the evaluations in. If we're not gonna hire people to do it, and the state is not interested in doing that, then we've gotta provide some additional time. There will be a June 1 notice for non-renewals to teachers. Rather than April 30th, the date will go to June 1st. In addition then, there is another date in law, a June 10th date. And basically, one of the reasons for the June 10th date is this. Suppose you issue a contract to a teacher and the teacher forgets to return it. Now, you may think that's silly, but it's not. It happens all the time. They get a bunch of papers in there, there's a single piece of paper that's a contract. It doesn't get signed and returned. There is an assumption in state law right now that if a teacher does not return that contract by June 10th, he or she has accepted the contract. That date now moves from June 10th to June 15th. There is also a requirement that the provisions in this bill regarding teacher evaluations will prevail over any collective bargaining agreement entered into either on or after the effective date of Senate Bill 316, which will be 90 days after the governor signs it. So if you're in the middle of a collective bargaining agreement now, what you have in your collective bargaining agreement stands. Because under the terms of the Ohio Constitution, there is something called a contract impairment clause, and I wish I wouldn't have said that, 'cause now you're gonna wanna know where it is. Article 2, Section 28, which says that you cannot impair an existing contract or pass a law to apply it retroactively, alright? So therefore, that's why this would take effect after the expiration of the collective bargaining agreement. You also have an obligation to consult with your teachers in terms of what this whole evaluation framework looks like. But it has to be based on the, on the State Board of Education adopted teacher framework. There are some, some details that you can consult and work out. But by and large, it has to look a lot like that state framework. And the other thing, the state board has been authorized to periodically update its state framework, and if it does that, that's gonna require an update in every school district perhaps. Teacher testing was another issue, and I'm talking faster, Dr. Wickers. Effective with the beginning of the 2015, 16 school year, any teacher who currently teaches a core subject area, English Language Arts, Math, Science, Social Studies, who has received a rating of ineffective for two of the last three years, all of a sudden, you must, not may, you must require that teacher to take a written examination. The examination will be selected by the Department of Education, and it's going to be of content knowledge. It's not going to be about pedagogy or methods of teaching. It's gonna be content-based. If the person teaches science, it's gonna be science, alright? And the teacher is not responsible, according to the law, for the cost of the exam. Doesn't say who is, but I have a pretty good idea. If I eliminate that possibility, I think I know what the other opportunity is, so. Now, if the teacher passes the exam, now remember, this is a teacher who has been rated ineffective for two out of the last three years. If the teacher passes the exam, then the teacher at his or her own expense is gonna have to complete professional development, which are targeted to the deficiencies that are identified in the evaluation. If that teacher then receives another ineffective rating or does not complete the professional development, those are grounds then for the termination of the contract, regardless of whether it's limited or continued. If the teacher passes the exam, the teacher is not required to take the exam again for three years, regardless of whatever evaluation rating they may get in the future. There's going to be, the, no decision to terminate or not to renew a teacher's contract can be made solely on the basis of the exam result until and unless, the law says, the teacher has not attained a passing score for at least three successive series of administration of that test. Also, by December 31st, 2014, the chancellor of the Board of Regents is going to be required to report the number and the percentage of teachers, the graduates of each teacher preparation program in this state. Gonna have to report them by their evaluation performance level. In other words, what percentage of the teacher education graduates from the Ohio State University were rated as accomplished? What percentage were rated as ineffective? And that will be a public report. Blended learning. I'm gonna run through this quickly because for the first time now, we have a definition of what blended learning is. Blended learning is a combination of learning through technology digitally and also physically being present in a, be in a building. Actually, the, the actual language is there, you can read that. But we also have enough standards then for blended learning. For example, if you have blended learning, though, you're not required to have more than one teacher for each 125 students. Can you have more? Sure. You don't have to. It also doesn't say, can you have one for 150 students? It does set a pupil-teacher ratio. Internet or computer-based community schools, we have several of those in the state of Ohio, they are not qualified as blended learning schools. And then, here's the thing that's very different about the blended learning. All students at any grade level, kindergarten through 12, can earn credits or can be promoted based upon demonstrating mastery through some kind of competency-based learning model. It will not require 180 days necessarily. It might require more. It could require less. In other words, the idea is, if the student has mastered the content through the blended learning program, then we're gonna go ahead and promote the student, or we're gonna grant the high school credit to the student. School is becoming less of a place and more of a facilitative site. There'll be an exemption in blended learning for the minimum school year, for the minimum school day. And the State Board of Education has to adopt standards to apply for everything from educator license, because I submit to you that teaching blended learning is a whole lot different than what we traditionally prepare our teachers to do. Some provisions on a whole bunch of other things, promotion, graduation requirements, for example, and then also the normal standards that apply to facilities because the kids will spend part of their day at a school. Submissions with regard to choice. Students who are currently attending non-public schools that do not have state charters but which get state charters, they become eligible for the Educational Choice Scholarship. That will not impact any of the students in the Olentangie Local School District. But it will impact some others, particularly some of the urban districts. But the one thing that you will need to do is, if you are completing an evaluation of a student for a disability, or you're doing something, including developing, reviewing, revising the IEP, you're gonna have to send a letter or an electronic notice to the parent and let the parent know. the parent, and let the parent know that the student might be eligible for either the autism scholarship or the John Peterson Special Need Scholarship. Community school can adopt a policy on, you have students who do attend community schools, some of them attend digital schools. The community school is going to be permitted to adopt a policy on the number of documents that are required to identify the district of residence for the student. And there are five possible documents that could be used. And it doesn't matter what your policy is in the Olentangie Local School District, whatever the policy is of that community school with regard to the number of proofs of residence, that's what they're going to use as the basis for the decision. So, it's going to supersede any local district policy that you may have. There was originally a requirement for the Department of Education to try to get RFPs, Requests for Proposals, to establish sixteen regional community schools to serve gifted students. That's now gone. It wasn't a may do this, it was going to require the Department of Education to actually get those proposals and create those schools. That is now gone. Few other things, adult ed instructors who work less than 120 days per year, they're not going to receive sick leave. The other thing that happens has to do, TIF legislation, that's Tax Incentive Financing. Basically, what those are, tax abatements. And right now, the way that works is, the school district, under certain circumstances, most circumstances, as a matter of fact, is notified of the application for this tax abatement. But the only way that the joint locational school finds out about it is if the school district lets them know. Nobody's required to tell them, but yet, they're drinking at the same public trough that you are. So therefore, there's going to be a requirement then that they be notified of that legislation. There are some facilities issues that have to do with segmenting, the exceptional needs program, and then, well, the expedited local partnership program, I think we can skip through there. There is no change in what was passed in House Bill 153 that you're all familiar with. There was a change in law that allowed a qualified school administrator to serve as your gifted coordinator. There was a proposal to remove that, to force then the issue of the gifted coordinator being the only person who can oversee those services. That requirement was removed, so there's no change in what we had there. There will be a required report by December 31st of 2013 and every year thereafter. Right now, we have a provision in Ohio law that says, if you have a student who has a, is suspected of having a disability, part of the whole process, replacement is an eye examination, you know? Is poor vision one of the reasons that the child is having this, experiencing this problem? And so, the question that's arisen is, are we really enforcing that as we should? And so, what's going to happen now is, you're going to be required to report by the end of December of 2013, the number of students with disabilities who did receive the comprehensive eye examination. It's going to be part of your intake procedure for a child who has a disability. We have something now, of course, with calamity days, everybody's familiar with that, that's cold weather, very cold weather, snow, ice, all of those things, those are calamity days. But we have a brand-new addition to the list for calamity days, and that's law enforcement emergencies, alright? Now, if you're wondering what triggered that, a lot of people immediately jumped to the conclusion it would be the tragic events that occurred in Charton, Ohio. That's not true. This is all triggered by the escape of exotic animals in Muskingham County, alright? Because the sheriff asked all the school districts, obviously, to shut down until they were able to contain the threat from, from ferocious animals. And so therefore, those school districts all had to make those days up, because they didn't qualify for calamity days. So now, if your sheriff in Delaware County declares a law enforcement emergency, that's going to be eligible for a calamity day, and hopefully, we have no animals escaping from the zoo. You will also, this is a major change too. You know, we have very specific age requirements for admission of kids to kindergarten and first grade. September 30th, although you have an option of choosing a date in August if you want, alright? This is basically going to do away with that. What this is going to say is, if a child's not yet a required age for kindergarten or first grade, then you can admit them in accordance with your board adopted acceleration policy, and you have one, because every board of education in this state is required to have one, alright? That's going to be the gate through which the student goes to start school before those mandatory dates. And the evaluation can actually be triggered by a referral from another educator within the district, a preschool educator, maybe a preschool teacher who's had the kid in class, the pediatrician or psychologist who knows the kid, or the parent can also refer a kid for early admission then to school. There are a lot of questions that we have about how does this match then with the third grade reading guarantee? And I think it probably depends upon the quality of your particular acceleration policy. You don't want to set kids up for failure. In addition, right now, those decisions are all made by a group called the People Personnel Services Committee. A psychologist, a gifted coordinator, a teacher who has experience at that grade level, a building principal, that committee all goes away. That's not going to be the decision. The decision is going to be on the basis of your acceleration policy. The body mass index screening, which has been around now for a couple of years, we finally, I think, have language on that. It basically, for this year, I think you still have to apply for a waiver through the Department of Education, okay? However, for the 2013-2014 school year, that would eliminate the need for the waiver. And the reason I say for this year is because the effective date for the legislation is going to be after the start of the school year. So just to be safe, I would, I would do the waiver. As a local school district, you have annually a July 1 deadline for your fee-for-service agreement with your educational service center. That's going to eliminate that deadline. Basically, you still have to have the agreement, it just doesn't have to be done by July 1st. And there's also a provision that will affect two districts here in central Ohio, that has to do, if they have kid, more than 16,000 students, they're going to be able to go into the same kind of agreement that you do. The one difference is, they don't have to have a supervisory deduction like you have to have. And the reason for that is, because of the way the formula works, they would have to have so many supervisors, it would really be an unfair taxation basically on their resources, because of the way that formula works. So, with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions, and I apologize for taking so much of the group's time. I think that, that basically, this is important legislation, and it's going to be the law of the year. I don't think there's much doubt about that. So I'd be happy to try to respond to any questions.
For the kindergarten reading, or for the third grade reading guarantee, does that start with this year's third graders, or for, or this year's kindergarteners, because they would be in third grade as they progress, or do we just start it in 2013?
Actually, as I'm reading it, except in some very limited circumstances, it will be 2014, 2015, because it says that the child must have had two years during, reading intervention during two full school years. Only way that's going to be possible, you're not going to be able to start the retentions until after those two years.
But we have to be able to...
You have to start the diagnosis, and, yes, the RIN. Yes?
Two questions, the judgment of holding back the student, does that lie with the Ohio Department of Education or the teachers, educators here?
In terms of holding back the student for other than the reading guarantee, that's still your local decision right here among your own staff. But in terms of the reading guarantee, it's solely based on performance on the state reading assessment, or on an alternative assessment that's selected by the Department of Education.
And then the second one is, can we get a copy of the test that you were talking about for teachers that, instead of having an endorsement, they could just pass the test, and you could bypass the cost of the training and everything if they can pass it? Can we get that now and give it to our teachers and have them practice?
Good question. First of all, whatever instrument the department selects, they haven't shared yet, okay? Because, like I said, this isn't even 24 hours old at this point, okay? So, but my suspicion is, if it operates the way most standardized testing programs, like Praxis, for example, that, that all starting teachers take, there's not going to, there might be a practice test, there's not going to be a, you know, a practice test that won't have the same questions on it that the final test will have, because they'll protect that the same way they do the ACT, the SAT, or any other exam.
Tom, just a clarification for, and for those in the audience, when you talk about that third grade reading guarantee, approximately 5% of our kids were below proficient, which means, if you get it down to the limit, it's, it's right around 2%. So, we're, we're really talking here, if you take a, our average-sized class at that level is roughly 1300, between 13, 1350, so we're probably talking about, at the limited level, about 32 kids, which, you know, I, I know, I totally, you do a great job on this legislation, and, and we are on top of that, and it won't amount to as many kids as other places. Granted, if we have one, that's bad, but, but it looks like about 32.
You know, as a high-performing district like Olentangie, you're not going to have a lot of those kids. But remember, you're going to start identifying them in kindergarten and putting in this reading improvement plan.
Right.
So, you're going to have work to do and an investment to make. You might even be able to reduce that number, but you're right, well, based on your current numbers, that's about where you would be. But remember also this, the Department of, the State Board of Education is empowered to ramp up those standards. Ultimately, they want to get every kid who's below proficient.
Right.
And there is nothing that prevents them, in the long haul, from even raising what the cut score is for proficient.
That is correct. And 5% of what we have would be 65, below proficient.
Right.
So, we have work to do, obviously.
Maybe not as much as a lot of other students.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Ash.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As before, great presentation.
Yes.
Ms. Martin, are you ready, please? Do I have a policy presentation update?
I have only one policy to present for review tonight, and that is Policy 75403, Student Network Internet Access for Use and Safety. This is, as you can tell at the bottom of this draft policy, a new updated policy from Neola, it says Neola 2012 at the bottom of it. And the reason why I'm asking for you to review this policy is, this is an E-rate requirement in order for districts to receive reimbursement monies for connectivity services, in order to apply for those E-rate funding dollars. E-rate requires us to have the most updated policy of student network and internet access. Now, I do, I want to point out something to you. There are a few slight changes, and the changes are in dark wool print, but on the last, excuse me, on page four or five, where it says about two-thirds of the way down in the policy, it has a note, and it has some strike-throughs, disregard those strike-throughs. I'd like to include that piece in the policy, so that the policy says, "Students shall not have access to social media for personal use," however, look at the next line, "but shall be permitted to access social media for educational use," which is what I would hope we would support. So disregard that strike-through, we obviously don't have that. So, it is rare that I just bring usually one policy for review, but that's the circumstance for this one, so I apologize for that.
No, thank you, I didn't have to read through 200 pages.
That is a good thing, I will say. Is there anything?
Thank you, Linda. And Mr. Rafe, athletic handbooks.
Well, I hope this will be one of my shortest presentations. Thank you. The Athletic Handbook that you have before you has basically some very, very minor language changes, things that change in the Ohio High School Athletic Association ripple through our handbook, so there's just some language in those areas. Sometimes legislators change some academic laws with things like credit flex or online coursework, as you just heard Mr. Ash say, and some of those things ripple through the, through the Athletic Handbook. So there were some language changes in, in those areas. The other, probably the major change to the handbook was the reinsertion of the drug testing procedures that we had previously used in the past, since we approved the high school drug testing the last, at the last meeting. So that, that's the biggest, the bulk of, of the change to the Athletic Handbook. The Handbook's distributed to all athletes, parents, and coaches, so it just serves as a guide for, for athletic teams. Take any questions?
Just one, someone sent me an email from the public that asked me how many items that I've added to the, formal items I've added to the agenda, and I haven't added any. But on this, I have a recommendation that we add something at the, at the next one. At least we put on there is the GPA. For the athletes on here, it's, we end off the, off the handbook saying that it's a privilege to play sports. I think that we should increase the GPA from a D to a C to be able to play sports, from 1.5 to a, a 2.0, and that would be a better explanation of athletics being a privilege. Have any comments?
So, could you clarify your request, please? I'm not sure what you...
To increase the GPA from 1.5, from a D to a C, to play sports.
So you want to add an agenda item to the June 20th meeting?
Maybe I said it wrong. What I want to do is increase the GPA. Do I have to add that on the agenda, or do we just vote on it next time, or is it going to be...
I think you can take action that time, we're going to have to add it to the agenda by next week.
Make it part of any revisions to the report.
Okay.
Well, and just to, you know, to clarify that, we, we have discussed that the Ohio High School Athletic Association has a, has a rule of 1.0 as their base requirement, and you have to pass five classes. Eligibility is not, ineligible is not traditionally an issue for our athletic teams. On average, our athletes perform at a higher level than our, our average students. Setting the bar at a 1.5, which is more than the OHSAA, given our rigorous curriculum, and quite honestly, you know, kids, if we push kids to take the highest level of classes possible, we put some of them in tenuous situations, and sometimes they stretch themselves past their academic capacities. If, if a child takes five courses and gets a C minus in all those courses, that C minus would calculate to a 1.67 grade point average. So, you know, even then, if we pushed it to as high as a 2 point, a kid that's got five straight C minuses would be ineligible. The other part of that, there truly are kids out there that are working as hard as they possibly can, peddling as hard as they possibly can, taking our most rigorous curriculum possible. If you set a bar that, as high as a 2.0, and then that takes that kid out of sports, it eliminates the opportunity for us to, to get intervention and, and provide them the assistance they need and keep them in a disciplined environment. If I felt our kids were, I would advocate to, to change the GPA requirement and raise it. If I felt our kids were just squeaking by at that 1.5 level and weren't trying to get the highest GPAs possible, but that's simply not the case with our student athletes.
As a benchmark, do you have an idea what other school districts are doing in particular?
They're, they're all, they're in a, there's a variety. Columbus Public has a 2.0, just as an example, which sounds, which may sound striking that ours would be lower than theirs, but our academic standards are so much higher across the board than all those, and, and again, we have very, I don't have the number with me, we have very, very few kids who are...
The school board did look at this in 2007, when we were looking at the Athletic Handbook, and information was pulled from the school districts that are, surround us, and, for instance, Dublin. Dublin had a higher GPA requirement, but they had multiple waivers. So you could apply for X amount of waivers in this class, at this level, X amount at this class, and X amount at this class. So the only waiver that is in our current policy is at the middle school level, and that's because the, the kids don't get the GPA yet, you know, and it gives them a time to get used to the high school grading situation. And so, we don't offer any waivers at the high school level, whereas Dublin, at that time, had a higher GPA, but they were offering waivers. So if you were ineligible for, you know, one semester, well, then you just applied for a waiver. So then what good is the, the GPA system? You know, what, what good was the, the minimum? You know, what good was the minimum? And so that was what was concluded in two thousand and seven, but we can go back and find that information and try to update it. Delaware just updated theirs to one-point-seven-five. They just approved it at their last board meeting.
I think it would be good to spend some time for next meeting, updating analysis, getting comfortable with, is the policy reflective of what we want it to be?
I agree.
I'm going to also caution the fact that we now have gone to flex credit and athletics counting as credit for physical education. You have the potential of putting a student in a bind when you make them ineligible, but they have the opportunity to get credit. I think that's oftentimes the difference between music and sometimes athletics, is the fact that music is for credit. Now we have athletics as credit for physical education or any flex credit, and just a caution.
Yeah, we need some guidance on that and what that is.
So could we do that in June as the follow-up?
I'll add that for you before the meeting, so you can see how, I forgot who it's going to be.
Twenty.
The OCC schools, is that enough?
Well, those are the schools that we're moaning and peed against, and those are the, you know, the Dublins, the Westervilles, the Worthingtons, Big Walnut, Delaware.
Whatever you think that's comparable to.
Yeah.
You've got to tell us what you think would be the most relevant comparison.
Would be Columbia. I don't know.
Well, we have our state comparison group.
Yeah.
OCC schools are easy. I can, that's, that's a comparison group.
It's only taking the GPA from the last quarter, right?
Correct.
Right here?
It's the preceding quarter participation.
So if they're ineligible for one period because they have a D average, then the next period, they can bring it up if they try and they're eligible there, right?
But, yes, but typically, in a, that covers an entire sports season. So if it happens in the fourth quarter of the preceding year, they're ineligible for the entire first quarter of the next year, which is the entire fall sports season. If they have a bad first quarter, they're ineligible. Winter season overlaps second and third quarter, but they're ineligible for a quarter. Then again, the only, the caution of setting those things and putting kids in a position of being ineligible is it takes them out of, for a lot of them, the reason they're coming to school, and then that creates a different problem, because if they don't have that engagement piece.
What's it making them ineligible for? Besides the sports, I mean.
It makes them ineligible for a sport season. But again, my experience is that that, the kid who struggles to get that one-point-five GPA to be eligible is a kid who struggles to be engaged with academic work in the first place. For a lot of those kids, the reason they come to school is to play sports. So if we take sports away from them, they don't have a reason to come to school. And having coached a couple of those kids in my career, it's hard for me.
And I'll just follow up on that. I am a board member of my Rotary Club's foundation, and we have counselors and A.D.s who sit on our board, and I've heard those stories where the child involved in athletics is a means for them to help turn that child's life to a positive situation, so, and I've seen it from examples.
Well, and again, if I felt that eligibility was a problem, I'd be advocating, that's what I'd do, I would definitely be advocating for a higher standard if I felt like ineligible was a problem and across the board.
If it's not a problem, we should just make it two-point-oh. I don't see what the problem, they were talking about one quarter. Anyway, you're going to do a study, and we're going to talk about it in June?
June or July?
July.
They're both, they are both regular board meetings.
Okay.
Already set.
Well, that's true. That's right.
And that agenda was set out.
Single meetings are... Thank you, Martin.
Thank you.
All right. The title here for the last board work session item is semi-annual Q and A forum. At the beginning of the year, those of you who follow our board meetings irregularly, you might recall that before the year started, I sat down with Dr. Lucas and with Linda and Becky, and we went through providing a schedule of our work sessions for the entire year so that we could help overlap the programs that we need to talk about, what the order should be, et cetera. And out of that discussion, and with Kevin, I'm sorry, and through that discussion, Kevin had made a comment about public participation and interaction that goes beyond our normal procedure here at our board meetings with public participation, where we do not have dialogue. And we thought this would be a good night to start a discussion, a board meeting here among us, to see what you all felt, what are the kinds of opportunities that might be available, pros or cons, however you might feel. And before we start that, would you like to introduce something, anything you want to say about it? I think we have several options, and obviously, that will come out in this discussion. The semi-annual question and answer forum that we have talked about would be two board members, the treasurer and the superintendent, having dialogue with community members. Now, that's one option. Why not? That's one that I know has happened and is currently happening up in North Canton. So that would be an option, but that's not the only option. I think, I would echo your remarks, and I know Mr. O'Brien had brought that up, was the fact that right now, governance policies at the board level says, public participation takes place, we can make a clarifying comment or ask a clarifying question. As we all know, sometimes facts get mixed up, and at times, you want to have a dialogue. I think that was, Mr. O'Brien's main concern was, is there an avenue to allow discussion between the board and the public? And I think that's, that's where the discussion begins.
Correct.
So, yeah, context, because the context of the discussion was, you know, I've been on both sides of public comment.
Right.
I've been on that side of the podium and this side of the podium, and it's equally frustrating in that you get up on that side of the podium, and we'll find this out tonight, many of you can experience this tonight, you want a dialogue with the board, and the way we've structured some of this governance, it can be a challenge. So what we're trying to think through or talk through as a group tonight is, how can we perhaps increase some of that dialogue in a way that doesn't derail meetings, right? Because unabated, you know, public comment can go on and on, as we've seen in other districts where unchecked or unabated, without decent structure, you know, we can just be here for hours and everything. So how do we find that right balance, the right structure? I think the Q and A forum was an encouraging idea that we wanted to kick around to see what is the best way to create a more interactive experience, but yet keep it manageable, for both parties, frankly.
Let me introduce some options, and maybe that would help spur some thinking. When we started talking about this, I reached out to board presidents and our peer dealerships around the autograph, and I asked them a series of questions. First of all, I explained who we are and that we are going to have this conversation. And I asked them, what are you currently doing, if anything? And if you are doing something, what format are you working with, or have you tried, how has it succeeded? And give me some ideas. And I did hear back from some, so I'll just share those with you, and then we can take off from there. And again, these are just opinions and what other school board presidents are sending on to me, and a couple of them even said they even talked to past board members and current board members just to solicit some thoughts. So it was everything from doing it at a board meeting, or the idea of doing it at a different location, and whether it's two board members, so it's not an official meeting. They, one group was doing breakfast with the board, kind of with their title, so they would do it early.
There might be food throwing at that.
Could be a food item, I suppose. And the coffee chat style, which we all know has worked very successfully through, in the levy campaign, leading up to May of eleven. That's all, that's every year.
He keeps doing those.
It's not just levy.
He does them all.
Oh, well, thank you. Thank you.
The volume might pick up.
The volume picks up. Yeah, the volume picks up.
He's still doing it.
They, others, yeah, you're right, thank you. Others have said that they would do just special meetings as necessary because of some subject that was coming up. One told me that at first, the first meeting, which was of particular significance, what was going on, had a lot of people. The next time they did it, there was virtually nobody there, and they just stopped doing it. But they gave it a try, they looked to see what would work. So I just thought I'd introduce some of those comments that I was hearing. It was a variety. Some of them actually do official board meetings, where some were saying, we would suggest you don't just do two board members, you do the whole board. So thoughts?
Breakfast sounds okay, like all the board members or something?
We can't do it with everyone, we'd have to...
Or you could.
We could if we made it a breakfast meeting.
And that's what they did.
An actual official meeting.
Mm-hmm.
That's just without an agenda and...
No, they, they were all specific, that it was a specific agenda, could be one, no more than two items. So it was dedicated to the topic. Did we have to do that? But that's what I heard.
You mean per person that asked the questions?
No, so we might be discussing...
Class size.
Or class size.
Oh, you mean it's non-related to whatever their questions are?
You know, you keep it to one or two topics.
Turf.
Keep it short. Could be the turf discussion.
Because we don't talk about that.
Okay, it could open up a venue to get...
Exactly.
...to get cases done.
Absolutely.
Because one of the challenges we've experienced with this turf issues is, as these things evolve, it's been hard for, for us, and others, to keep up with the evolution of the project. So if there are more forums for us to do that, then I don't...
We used, the board used to, because I sat on it, we used to have, and I cannot remember the name of the committee, and I'm looking at Sue Mahler to see if she remembers the name, but it was a committee of the board that brought to the board committee concerns. It was like, and that's how the redistricting committee got started, as a subcommittee of that committee. And so like, one time, we had someone come to that committee and say, I need to talk about the temperature of milk in the cafeteria. And then that committee, you know, tried to get the answers, and then brought it forward to the board. So that was a different structure that was used as well, and I cannot remember what the name of that committee was, but that was another way to solicit input, because they could come to this committee and give them any topic to discuss, and the committee kind of vetted it, and then brought it forward to the board with kind of like a plan of action. But I don't know if that was the right way to do it either. Hilliard does breakfast at Panera with two board members and the superintendent and the treasurer at one time, but I hate to do that, because then you're not getting the input from the other three board members.
That was a consensus of what I heard.
I mean, it depends on what the goal of these meetings are. If we're really doing it to have specific dialogue that people want to talk about, it would be frustrating to me to say, we're going to have another board meeting and we're going to set the topics.
Yeah.
Because that's not necessarily what they want to talk about. Yeah, if we're going to do it issues-based and just when we need it, and say, okay, we need to get together and talk about turf, or we need, that's a different thing. So I think what we should do first is figure out why, I work at a company that likes to have a lot of meetings, and I'm always saying, let's decide what we want the outcome of that meeting to be. And so that would be, what my curiosity would be, is the outcome really, so that there's open dialogue from the public and a chance for conversation, then maybe you're better served with a two-on, you know, an open thing, that's an open forum, and come talk with whatever, if they feel they're not getting what they need from email or phone calls or individual dialogue with us. Not having it be a full official meeting is, yeah, not necessarily, wouldn't get everyone's opinion, but you also are not structured and formalized in a way you would be if someone's just sitting down to talk to you. So I don't, I don't know that a structured meeting would get us to the end game that we're trying to do, because it still then would have some restrictions on what we talk about and what we...
That's true. That's, I think, more than anything, that's about time control.
Right.
Well, and how Dr. Lucas sets up his coffee chats, right? There are rules and...
Right, yes.
There is decor that has to be maintained in those meetings, otherwise you just end them, right? So having that set up in front, I think, has typically been helpful.
Oh, yeah.
Kind of set the ground, saying, this isn't, we're going to be respectful and all that stuff.
Subility.
Subility, thank you.
I agree with that, having that, but having an informal meeting where there's no agenda, but have ground rules for...
Yeah.
I agree with that.
Yeah. And just think, if we're setting the topics, it doesn't, the opportunity that we're looking, it just doesn't feel right.
And a lot of those coffee chats take the journey of the crowd.
Yeah.
You know, if you're with young parents, you talk a lot about elementary, kindergarten issues, things like that. If you're with the older, I'll say, more experienced crowd, you're talking about high school things.
So would you add it, like we have, most months, we have two board meetings. Would you add a third board meeting, or would you add it to an existing meeting?
For us to decide. Typically, what I heard was it was another meeting, and that was its purpose, that you weren't talking about, you weren't taking action on items, et cetera. Now...
Add it to the existing.
I don't know about adding it every month.
After. Someone had to be really dedicated to want us sticking around afterwards and chat.
You can do it before, right?
Yeah, if you have board members, I mean, I had trouble getting here.
Like every six months or four months?
It's like you said, start at six, and then push the other stuff along the way. Start time can be insane.
Yeah, I like the idea of tagging it on one end or the other, which I appreciate hanging out with you all. I've got other commitments, but, so doing it instead of trying to set up a seven a.m. meeting or something. I mean, I'm pretty open and flexible to having dialogue, as you all know, but I like the idea of either doing that from six to seven, one meeting, you know, before...
There is a way to...
Where it's not then the official meeting, and only a couple of us agree to show up or something.
Yeah.
The hour early, and the other start, and the business starts at seven, or tagging it on the end, it's a little more complicated, because you don't know how many meetings are going to go.
I prefer, personally, before, and I also like the fact that it does give you an end time, that your goal, that your goal is to reach.
So something like saying six to seven, and then the actual meeting would start at seven, and so two people would agree, and we'd rotate who those people are?
No, I'd rather have everybody here.
And I...
Yeah, I think everyone should be here. Because you want to get input from the entire board, not just two, and full of dice, and oh, I only got Kevin and Dave.
But then not determine, not say what the subject has to be.
Right, yeah. Open mic.
I think we're flexible there. It could be, you can have half an hour of this general comment.
Come in and sing, tell jokes.
And I've been, because of my business, I'm a city council, and it's all over the state of Ohio, and all year long, and a lot of times, city councils will have their special meetings right before whatever the topic may be. They go through the roll call, but it's open forum, or whatever you want to call it, and then they adjourn that meeting, and then they go through the process again for the regular meeting, whether it's a workshop or a board. And I see that being very successful. The people come in, they want to talk about, sometimes they'll stay, sometimes they move on.
And do it on the nights when there's not already public comment, so do it on...
Work session nights?
Work session nights.
Every month? Every year?
Well, maybe you start with once a quarter, and then just see how it goes.
I like that, rather than every, or twice a month or once a month.
And we can change it, I mean, you know. Well, and I think if you're going down that road, setting parameters, for example, there are some issues that can't be discussed, personnel being, negotiations... Contracts, negotiations. Legal issues, things like that, and it's long, in fairness to the public, knowing coming in, I can't talk about these specific things, there is an avenue to talk there with the executive session, obviously, but, and again, having those parameters in place that kind of guides the process, and sticking to them.
And some sort of thing around, you know, well, if there's one person here, I guess they could talk for the entire hour, back and forth with us, but if there are multiple subjects, multiple, how do we determine how long we discuss a subject? We'd have to kind of feel our way through that.
Oh, yeah.
Because there could be ten topics that everybody wants to discuss in the hour.
I know that there was previous discussion before...
Citizens Advisory Committee, that's the name of the committee. I'm trying to think of that.
The previous, prior to January of, I don't know what year, what's that? Before I came on the board, there was, there was a similar discussion about public participation, not in this context, but I do, because I was there, I remember the discussion. Is there anything that you would, that you might feel we bring forward from that discussion?
I think at that time, it was to open up dialogue during the meeting.
Yes, during the meeting.
But then you get to the point where you're inhibiting, you're inhibiting, you're getting your business done.
Mm-hmm.
your business done. So this is probably a little more, A, proactive, and B, efficient.
Does that sound like a plan, drive, with six o'clock, Adam?
Six, six-thirty?
I think, oh, I'm sorry. Move that you're saying, suggesting moving the meeting from six to seven, and start at six, is that what...
Still, everyone's starting at six, but for an hour of informal...
We'll start, we'll start at six.
Informal conversation, and then the meeting, the business part, starts at seven.
Well, it's, you're talking about, so I understand, the work session.
Oh, yeah, work, yeah, I meant the business.
Keep the business session.
Yeah.
Yes.
Put this in front of the work sessions.
Well, talk about the logistics of that, and...
We can start, we can start also, I think before you...
Before the school year starts?
Before you finalize it, you start having a discussion about what your parameters are.
Yeah.
We could do that.
Civility.
Administration draft a proposal that we can track.
Well, I think the logical place to start would be coffee, just coffee chat.
The coffee chat, yeah.
I mean, it pretty well, I've had a lot of those, and usually, when we talk civility, I've had to break up arguments between neighbors, because nobody ever attacked me, so I guess that's...
That's good.
Well, would you like to express some thoughts about the parameters?
We can bring those in.
Okay.
I mean, I can share the parameters with you, and we can frame them to the board.
Okay. Let's plan on the work session of the August meeting.
To have that discussion about parameters, or to...
To start.
I was thinking to start.
Okay.
Then in July, at the July meeting...
We don't have a work session.
We don't have a work session.
Right, you could have a discussion.
It could be, it's something that we could adopt.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, I'll have those parameters for July meeting.
And you could check the protocol, I don't know if it's something we need to go on, I don't even think so, but it could...
I'm not sure.
Okay. So we would discuss it at a July meeting, and that gives us some time, frankly, I think that's a good idea, this allows some time to reflect on things like the parameters of civility.
Yes.
How do we control who gets to pick what topic, there's twenty, ten people here.
So let's all kind of think about that, we can share emails, and put it together for the July meeting.
All right.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, Ms. Jenkins, public participation number two, regarding action items. And would you be so kind to state the protocol, please?
Board policy sets aside thirty minutes of public participation. The president can extend that at his will, if he decides that we have so many people. When you come to the podium as you're called, please state your name and address, and you will have five minutes to speak.
Thank you. The first one here is Ms. Hedge, Lisa Hedge.
My name is Lisa Hedge, I live at 101 by Three Montes and Boulevard in Powell, and I've been a resident for twenty years in this school district, mother of three boys, and I can tell you, I can start clapping with, I can tell you that as a parent, these boys, all they talk about is sports, and I highly support the turf. I had half of the Owens Canyon Liberty football team in my house for ten or eight weeks, and that's all these kids talk about. And I don't have one bit of food left in my house either, but, anyway, I just, my husband and I are business owners in Dublin, and we have been trying and trying to get back in this school district, or get in this school district for our business, because our employees want to be here. Quite frankly, we want our tax dollars to be here, instead of Dublin. I'm sick and tired of hearing about Dublin being better than Owens Canyon, because it's not, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Garringer, Neil Garringer, please.
Neil Garringer, Lynn, sixty-nine, twenty-two, Lake Trail Drive, been a resident for thirteen years, and third child just graduated from Owens Canyon, a couple weeks ago. It's good to see you all again, it's been a couple months. Good evening. I came before this group in March, and presented considerable data related to the safety and health concerns of artificial turf. These data included increased injuries, burns, and infections, as well as the presence of organic and inorganic carcinogens, and heavy metals such as lead. I left you references and copies of all data. You showed little interest in this information, and ignored post-meeting promises to have further discussions. Since we are here three months later, then you are about to vote, and you are about to vote to approve issuing over 1.2 million in bonds to fund artificial turf. One can only conclude that the health and safety of Owens Canyon students is secondary to satisfying all the self-serving desires of well-meaning but misguided athletic boosters. In the past forty-eight hours, you have all received emails from over two hundred Owens Canyon taxpayers, who signed an online petition opposing artificial turf on our football fields. The passionate opposition to this act is widespread and growing, as just been in forty-eight hours. For a long time, the turf committee has been trying to raise required funds, but their efforts have fallen well short. This is further evidence of the lack of community support. If Owens Canyon residents wanted artificial turf, they would be willing to pay for it. Asking us to believe that the money from issuing these bonds will be paid back by the athletic booster organizations is ridiculous. The community may be slow in waking up to what is going on, but we are able to see through a fairy tale. If you authorize the issuance of this 1.2 million dollars in bonds for artificial turf, somehow you and the booster organizations will figure out how to spend that money, some way, somehow, and leave the taxpayers in the lurch for it. However, to go back to the safety concerns, in the email I wrote to you all yesterday morning, I referenced and attached a new study showing a statistically significant forty percent increase in injuries to football players on artificial turf versus natural grass. In case you did not read my email, I have another copy of the study here for you, the abstract, along with my comments here. The study was completed by Stanford University, and just published last May, or excuse me, last month, in May, and involves tracking injuries for five years in ten percent of all the NCAA schools. At a ninety-five percent confidence interval, that is the same statistical threshold that the FDA uses to approve drugs, and every major scientific study is based on. And you don't have to believe me, just ask, we've got a bunch of science and math teachers here in this district, go ask them what a ninety-five percent confidence interval is. You can't argue that this data, these data are valid. And it cannot be overwhelmed by the tsunami of unsupported urgency to move this project forward. Obviously, I am one of the many people opposed to artificial turf in Owens Canyon. This proposal should either be killed outright tonight, or at the very least, given the amount of money involved, put up for a vote by the taxpayers. Regardless whether the law permits it, you five on the board should not be allowed to incur this amount of debt to the taxpayers, because we're not talking about just the initial money, we're talking about long-term maintenance, because this is not maintenance free, we're talking about replacement in eight to ten years, and I've yet to see any kind of solid financial analysis of what you're committing the district to. In the time I have left, I would like to open it up to the board members to comment. In light of the health and safety concerns, the large and growing opposition across the district, and the unbelievable notion that the money will be paid back, and avoid a possible tax increase in the future, why would you vote for a proposal like this, that on top of everything else, has no direct educational benefit to students? I think that three months ago, none of you said anything, so I'm wondering if any of you have any comments in light of the information we presented, and whatever minute or two I have left, to voice an opinion on this, the taxpayers can hear how you feel. At least three of you are on the website as sponsors of this organization, so I kind of know where you feel, or at least where you felt at one point.
You have one.
Well, as I, to clarify, as I'm sure I would, or at least I would hope you understood from our prior conversation, we do not have dialogue on the public participation as it is organized. However, we are going to have a discussion item about turf, and every board member will have an opportunity to state how they feel about it. So I'm hoping that you'll hear responses that you're looking for.
You're going to have that discussion, unless not in an executive session? Okay.
No, tonight.
No, we added it to our agenda.
At the end of the week, we added it to the agenda.
Oh, all right, good, I thought you were talking about an executive session, discussion discussions, as you're, you're wont to do, it's all good to me. Here are a copy of my comments, if you care to reread them, and again, a copy of the study, showing statistically significant information. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hanson, Holly Hanson, please.
Hi, Holly Hanson, seven, six, six, one, Lydia Drive, Lewis Center. I don't want to talk anymore about fiscal responsibility, I think we've all heard enough about that lately, and understand where everybody in here stands on that issue. I'd like to talk to you about the community factor that is getting tossed around so lightly. Supposedly, the, supposedly, everyone is thinking of our community when asking for taxpayer dollars. The new turf will bring the community together, with more sporting events, banned competitions, and business functions. I've been living in the community for a little over seven years. Since my kids have been in school, I have volunteered every day with the school system and local charitable organizations. I am an active PTO and classroom participant, and chair of one of the superintendent's committees for school funding and action committee. I give many hours toward making my community the best place for every child. I am constantly checking for updates on state funding issues that will affect every child in this community for years to come. My goal is to make a difference in every family's life in Owens Canyon community by keeping pressure on our state legislators to make school funding more equitable for everyone in Ohio. My kids have ten-plus years left in this school system. Many of you here tonight have kids that are out of the system in a couple of years. The future looks dim for schools all across this country, with schools facing budget cuts and teacher layoffs, but I will be here for the next decade, fighting for every dime and every teacher and every child. This is what a sense of community should be. When I hear something like, quit turfing now so my son can play football on it, in the fall, or else I will pull my donation, it makes me sad. Is this a sense of community? Is this the lesson we want to teach to our children about community? If this happens tonight, let's take a look at my community in the next decade. Turf gets voted in, in two years, the wrong people get voted on the school board, curriculum gets changed, books get taken from libraries, programs start getting cut, in four years, when we need that next levy, it will never happen. Property values will suffer, sports will get cut, ban will be gone, and the turf's budget for maintenance won't be existed. I can only wish that the same effort and concern for turf was given to fight for more school funding, and maybe we would not be here right now, struggling to find out how to pay for it.
Thank you. Mr. Hanson, Steve Hanson, please.
My name is Steve Hanson, I live at seven, six, six, one, Lydia Drive, Lewis Center. I'm a parent taxpayer with two daughters from the Owens Canyon School District. I stand here tonight to express my concerns about the proposed turf project for our high schools. I'm not against turf, in fact, I support the concept, but I ask the board to be physically responsible to vote no tonight, unless two conditions of the project can be guaranteed to the taxpayers. One, that no tax dollars be used for this project. The turf committee has said all along, this project will be privately funded. Hold the turf committee accountable to their words. The use of any taxpayer dollars towards this project is physically irresponsible. And two, proposed funding model has changed. I commend the turf committee for raising an incredible amount of money in pledges, but a pledge is not a legally binding contract. If this money does not come through, the district is on the hook. This is a bad business decision, and is physically irresponsible. Tonight's vote is not about turf. Tonight's vote is much greater than that. Tonight's vote is about the path you choose for our school district. Do you choose a path of fiscal responsibility which guarantees the support of the taxpayers during the next election cycle, the levy cycles? Or do you choose a path of fiscal irresponsibility, and roll the dice on electing another zealot in the school board, and guaranteeing future levy failures? During the last levy, we were told that if the levy failed, there would be no sports, period. My youngest daughter enjoys connect-the-dot puzzles. She can easily figure out the picture before the dots are connected. I ask you to apply the same insight, and visualize the picture of our district's future, the board acts, in a physically irresponsible manner tonight. No future levies passing, no sports, just empty turf fields. I realize the tough political choice each of you faces tonight. It's difficult to satisfy two groups of individuals with your vote, but each of you must make the choice. Do you stand on the side of a small, special interest group with only a financial pledge, who is willing to roll the dice on the future of this district for their own self-interest? Or do you stand on the side of the large group of taxpayers, who elected you to be physically responsible with our district tax dollars? I urge you to choose a second option, and vote to be physically responsible. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moore, Mike Ball, please.
Thanks, Mike Ball, fifty-nine, seventy-three, Highland Hills Drive, Westerville. Been a district resident for twenty years, two kids graduated from the school district. Want to approach the board, the last time we met, we came and asked you, I represent the Owens Canyon Turf Committee, the last time we came to you, we asked you for $600,000 of district money, and we spent the last six or seven weeks, and we come back to you with a plan tonight, that involves no school district money, no taxpayer dollars. I just want to go through that real quickly. For Liberty High School, we have a $400,000 commitment from the booster organizations, $120,000 from existing cash, $130,000 from individual contributors over four years, if we move forward now, and $150,000 of site preparation from an individual donor at no cost. For Orange, we already have $512,000 of committed money from the athletic and music booster organizations. I need to add at this point, so people understand, this group is made up of probably twelve-hundred parents at Orange High School. They have raised more than $2 million in the last four years, and we are a fundraising machine, okay? So this amount of money is less than ten percent of what we bring in on a yearly basis. And it is not a hardship for any of the athletic groups, we will continue to move forward, funding our athletes and our music booster groups with no material impact to that group. We also have $120,000 in existing cash, $40,000 in rental revenue, and $10,000 already planned for two fundraisers, one on the Fourth of July, and one when the new stadium opens in the fall. That's $682,000 committed money. Both those represent enough to turf both those fields with no taxpayer money. Also, it's important to mention that our game plan is not to take eight years to pay off the loans. We already have fundraisers underway with a goal of raising $40,000 a year at both high schools, so that we pay the loans off sooner. In addition, additional money in years seven, eight, if we pay those loans off, goes to a replacement fund. What I will say is, replacement cost for a turf field is about $300,000 in today's money. Ten years from now, we expect that number to go down. But I'll also say, the price to replace a grass field is also $300,000. And if you've looked at Liberty's, we'll be there in ten years, no problem. Okay, so, replacement costs are also covered through increased revenue and maintenance savings, which we know take place. Our request to the school district, we're not requesting any money, we're requesting that you help us co-sign on the loan. That'll save each high school about $100,000, and would like to ask that we approve moving ahead to the completion in mid-August, prior to the fall sports seasons. White turf, one reason we began this in the first place, turf is a community asset. It's not just a school district asset, it's a community asset. It's used by a, by a bunch of different things, uses that we don't think about today when we think about a football field, athletic events, music events, physical education classes, community events, public health screenings that health organizations in central Ohio has already committed to do for our school district.
Yep, one minute left.
Youth athletics, tournaments, fundraisers, and practices. Just want to point out, grass field costs us about $1,200 a use, a synthetic turf field costs about $43 per use. So, in summary, this is a fully funded model that requires no school district money be used, and if we look across the district, the number of athletes... used, and if we look across the district, the number of athletes and music boosters that support this program, conservatively, fifteen thousand parents across the school district support this with their time, efforts, and money. Thanks.